Good evening and welcome to our meeting, the East Bridgewater Planning Board for Monday, April 7th, regularly scheduled meeting. We have this evening for the board Diane Phillips, Rachel Tedesco, Dwayne Crosby, Miles Heager, Roy Gardner, and myself, Kevin Riley. A number of items on the agenda tonight. First item to discuss is the approval of minutes. We do have minutes for February 3rd. If there are no questions or comments, the chair would just entertain a motion to waive the formal reading of those minutes and to approve them in the form provided.
I believe that that was a meeting that, Dwayne, you and I weren't here for?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Motion is made by Mrs. Tedesco and seconded by Mr. Gardner. Is there a discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, unanimous vote of the four members present at that meeting. We have a number of matters under other, if you will, for discussion tonight. First one is with respect to the Leila Estates matter, the streetlights. Mr. Macy has been in contact with the office and indicated that he's not able to attend our meeting tonight. He did however submit a letter indicating that he met with the various homeowners about two, two and a half weeks ago, provided them with various options, and they all indicated apparently that they preferred the installation of National Grid's streetlights. He has, he indicates, reached out to National Grid and is awaiting feedback from them and will provide us with further updates as soon as they are received. Roy, I don't know whether you've heard anything further on that, if you've had any other conversation with Mr. Macy, or if not.
I haven't since, but my understanding is National Grid will determine which of these existing junction boxes near the various intersections there are the most appropriate ones, and then will determine where the, where the streetlight bases need to go. They're going to be at the, at the end of the two cul-de-sacs and at the intersection where you take a 90-degree left-hand turn as you enter the, as you enter the subdivision and go down into the other cul-de-sac. So there would be three streetlights, two at the cul-de-sacs and one at the intersection that's about, you ever take 325 feet off of, off a summer street?
So maybe a suggestion, excuse me, is just to have the, the office reach out to the homeowner who had attended a couple of our meetings, just to confirm that, you know, everybody's on board, everybody's satisfied with everything, and then just to keep this on our list for perhaps a meeting, maybe the first meeting in June, to give it a little bit more time. Make sense?
Yeah, I think that should work.
So unless there's some other discussion or comment, we'll, we'll leave that on the, the agenda for the June...
Yeah, June 2nd, yes.
June 2nd, we'll have that on the, the agenda for further, further action if necessary. We'll keep it on the, on the burner. Okay, 798 North Bedford Street, a little further discussion on site plan compliance. I don't, Mr., no, no, Pat's not going to take that one, okay? So if Mr. Smith comes in, we will take care of him. 656 Plymouth Street, that one you might take, okay, you're going to put your hand up on that one, all right. So site plan approval. New construction at 656 Plymouth Street. The construction of a 4,200-square-foot commercial building together an access drive, associated parking and utilities. This is property that's owned by the Whitmoors, and we have the esteemed Mr. Carrara here and associates, whose name escapes me, I apologize.
Sammy, Samantha?
Samantha, yes. Won't escape me again. Mr. Carrara.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Members of the board, Phil Raitke, Pat Carrara from PMP Consulting, here with Samantha Krebs from PMP Consultants. So we're just here to talk about the site plan approval for 656 Plymouth Street. As Kevin alluded, it's owned by Mr. Whit, Mr. and Mrs. Whitmore. So what they would like to do, as Kevin said, was, is construct a 4,200-square-foot building as shown in the site plan. We have pavement shown from Plymouth Street, basically following the existing gravel access road into the farmland that's back there. It's going to be starting off a crown pavement with berms. As we get down past where the septic system is, it's going to transition into a cross-slope pavement to allow all the water to flow off to the easterly side of the property. When we get out in front of the building, it's actually going to be a concave, slightly concave, so the water comes in towards the middle of the pavement, it'll flow around the corner, and then through our means of conservation commission, we've also supplied a little drainage area beyond the building, within the buffer of the wetland to capture, treat some of the water, and then go through a planted buffer zone into the wetland area. So what makes this a little bit different, what you don't see, you don't see a whole lot of stormwater features beyond a grass swale, there is a roof drain system, and that feature I noted, and that's because all this water currently goes to the cranberry bog ponds on the site, and Mr. Whitmore wants as much water as he can get his hands on. So with the exception of the infiltration system, everything is designed to direct this water to continue into the bog ponds. Nothing goes into Plymouth Street, it's basically all downhill off of Plymouth Street. We did the soil testing for the septic system, we have that designed for the proposed uses in the building, and also we factored in some additional area for future uses. But currently we have, the building is going to be split, I believe, between just some basic dry storage for Cari, and then an adaptive gym is the other use that's going in there. So that's why we have all the ADA accessible parking spaces as shown in the site plan. There is a concrete walkway to go from the parking spaces to the building. They will have, you know, overhead doors and pass doors in the front at the paved area, and then behind the building will just be some landscaped lawn, and then we also are doing an enhanced buffer zone for the conservation. So we have been through conservation, we have received an order of conditions, and we also have submitted the administrative stormwater permit to DPW. Happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Okay. Open to the board, any questions, comments?
Just trying to figure out where's 856 is, it's not their home dwelling.
656, no.
No.
No. Currently you'd only notice that you have the driveway that goes into the plaza with the Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes.
And then next to it was the gravel road that goes into Cari's Cranberry Bogs, that's 656 Plymouth Street.
It's, from a standpoint of knowing where you are on 106, it's pretty much directly behind the Ashland Farms dairy stand.
Oh, God.
So it'd be on the right-hand side of the road that goes into the, the Whitmore landscaping, so on and so forth, the cranberry bogs and so forth. So only comment here is, we discussed this at a, I believe it was actually at track meeting that because of the physical location and the availability of Upland, if you will, that the, the parking would be pretty significantly constrained here.
Yep.
So therefore the uses that are defined in the special, I'm sorry, the site plan application would be kind of key to making sure that the, the parking being provided meets the requirements of, and I think approximately half of that building is going to be used as a... What's the best term?
Yeah, it's actually called an adaptive gym.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it basically serves people with some physical disabilities, is, is it adaptive gym site? So therefore the number of people actually there at any given time would be a relatively small number. I think the other, again, roughly 50% of the building would be used as, as part of the, the existing businesses that are on that site, again, which would require relatively minimal parking. Those existing businesses already have additional parking, you know, other locations on the site, so I don't think that that should be an issue. So based on the previous discussions we had, I don't see any issues with the, the application as it currently stands. They're going to make some significant improvements into the roadway access off of Plymouth Street and beyond where this building is, which should help control any, any stormwater runoff and so on and so forth, so. There should be no impact on any of the businesses that are actually fronting on 106, since the elevation is significantly lower than, than those buildings on 106.
Now, what are the setbacks, if you will, from 106 to the face of the parking and then the face of the building?
Oh, you had to ask me that.
I was, I was trying to find it on the plan, and either it's too small or I'm not sure, so I...
Yeah, we, we may not have even put it on there because it's, it's pretty...
There is one for the building.
Yeah.
It's got to be five, 600 feet.
Yeah, the, the building is set back 325 feet, Kevin. So the parking, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, that's about 240 feet to the parking spaces.
Okay, other questions from the board or comments? Not sure if the chair would entertain any motion anyone cares to make. Rachel? Diane?
I move that we approve of this plan.
Site plan?
Site plan, yes. Second.
So motion is made by Mrs. Tedesco, seconded by Mr. Heager, to approve the plan based on compliance with Section 13-2 of our zoning bylaws, the appropriate findings. Further discussion, there being none, all in favor, Mr. Gardner. Mr. Gardner has further discussion.
Just a quick note, it's, it's important to take into account that when we approve a site plan, we're approving that site plan primarily based on the parking requirements that are, are based on the then-proposed use. If that use changes, then that site plan needs to come back to the planning board for potential review of the available parking versus whatever the new proposed use would be. So other than that, I, I think I'm fine.
Okay. So stands the motion, all those in favor of the motion to approve, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, a unanimous vote of all members present and voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lady and gentlemen.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, still do not see Mr. Smith. I'm not sure whether he was given a specific time or not, but... This matter we'll discuss is update with respect to the MBTA community bylaw. So just for general consumption, town is going to move forward with a revised proposal to town meeting in the spring here. The revised proposal is basically the north district expanded a little bit by the addition of some town-owned properties, Roy has it on the map. Central district has been eliminated, or downtown district has been eliminated from consideration. There will be, in addition to the public hearing, that will be held by this board, there will be some additional, there will be an additional public forum coming up later this month, and also some additional information will be provided at meetings of, of various boards and committees of the town between now and our public hearing. Our public hearing would be the first meeting in June, Roy, is that what we were talking about?
April 21, April 28. June is after town meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm thinking May, sorry, sorry. I'm thinking our first meeting in May, sorry.
Yeah, the ads would, the legal ads would run April 21 and April 28. The public hearing would actually be the first meeting in May.
In May, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Which would be May.
So for, for general understanding, the, as Chairman has mentioned, the zoning map has, has only changed slightly in that we've added the, the two southernmost parcels with the, which are both owned by the town into the area that we would be proposing to the zone as MBTA zoning map 2025. A primary reason we're doing this is the recent court case which came down at the end of the year in, in 2024, is the Supreme Court has extended the approval deadline for, for MBTA zoning to, I believe it's June 1 of 2025, and made a formal request as part of that finding through mass housing, state-level mass housing, that those towns which were either waiting on the Supreme Court decision and/or had, had voted down the proposal, revisit that proposal based on the state Supreme Court finding that came down at the end of 2024, which is exactly what we're doing. Based on the discussion at, at previous town meeting in the fall of last year, we've made a decision to go to a single location, which would be the north location, that location bounded by Route 18, the Whitman Town Line and, and Winter Street, to meet the requirements of the State Zoning Act and the requirements within that, within that zoning act in terms of dimensional area, we've added those two parcels that belong to the town. So, so the map as currently shown up there, that's the map that also shows the mapped-out wetlands as, according to the current, our most current GIS map. So everyone understands, this also includes the area that the 40B project that's currently being proposed by the landowners both on Route 18 and on the Winter Street side, is included within this perimeter. So the feedback so far from the state is that we would get credit for those units as part of the MBTA zoning district, provided that 40B is approved, which it appears it's effectively been de facto approved, the zoning board of appeals has a current draft approval letter, which I believe they will be acting on probably Wednesday night this week. In any case, from a legal standpoint, those two items are, are two totally separate items. The 40B proposal is legally totally separate from the MBTA zoning map. MBTA zoning, actually as well as the 40B, are based simply on an individual developer willing to spend the money to do that development at his cost and paying for all of the required infrastructure, roadway, sewer, septic, whatever the case may be. So effectively there's no immediate defined cost to the town. Some of the longer-term costs to the town primarily would be defined by emergency services and, and possible school impact. That's been defined, documented at a pretty great length by the 40B project as well as the studies that we've done with Old Colony Planning Council. Even if we were, there was a worst case, we were to generate 200 new students in town in this area combined with whatever the 40B would, would combine. East Bridgewater currently is, is more than 22% below where the highest student rate used to be. Highest student rate in the town of East Bridgewater at one point was over 2,500. Right now it's under 2,000. The current school system has the ability to support that, that potential 150 to 200 new students without physical new buildings. I can't speak to the student head count versus the teacher head count, because that's a highly variable number based on the ability of the students, how the students are classified and, and multiple other things, but... So in any case, we are, we are going forward with an annual town meeting this year with a, with a new proposal for MBTA zoning, we're calling it MBTA zoning 2025.
I know there were some concerns with parking and stuff at the last meeting, I've lost touch since then. Is that why we're giving them the, the other two parcels to try to make up some space for, for the parking deficit that they were encountering?
No, so, so we got to be careful not, not to confuse, the, the 40B parking is, is still an issue. We don't have any controls over that. The MBTA zoning, the reason for the additional parcels is they, they want a minimum of 50 acres of developable land, and they use that same GIS map that shows the wetlands. So when you take that map and extract the wetlands from that, those two parcels are needed to make sure we're over the 50 acres of developable land.
So do they, are they, do they pay for those parcels, or do we get some kind of credit?
No, those are owned by the town, if somebody wanted to develop those, they'd have to buy them from the town. The town can only sell town-owned land at, at a public auction, highest price, you know, so forth and so on. So all of the land within, within those perimeters are privately owned. If someone wanted to develop those, they'd have to either buy the land or, or the current owner would have to propose a development. In a lot of ways similar to the current 40B, I think we all know that the current 40B proposal is before the zoning board of appeals, has already been advertised on commercial real estate sites as available for sale, with a 40B certificate already granted. That's a little premature because it hasn't been granted yet, but, but it is on, on multiple, it's on at least three public websites that I could find. So important thing to keep in mind is all of the development work, including connections to water and/or sewer, is that the cost of the developer, the town doesn't kick in dime one for any of that?
Hypothetically, it's already been shot down once at town meeting, what if we go to town meeting again here in the spring and it gets shot down again by the residents of town? Are we back to square one once again?
To some extent, but the state has made it extremely clear that 11 grant systems that are in place, of which we receive money from at least six of those, would be denied to the town if we were to vote it down. That's a number between $100,000 and $250,000, as I understand it.
So we're getting strong on?
I, I...
You can answer that, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you. Draft, Roy, when will the draft be up on the website?
The draft is going to be up on the site prior to that first advertisement, which would be prior to April 21.
Further discussion, questions from the board?
So let me, I'm going to try and answer that question indirectly.
Thank you.
So, so the way this stands, and I think we all know that, that demographics in the state of Massachusetts have changed dramatically over the last 20 years. 20 years ago, the average occupancy of a household in, in the state of Massachusetts was a number just under four. Current demographics in Massachusetts, and more specifically the demographics in the town of East Bridgewater, it is the, the population of the town based on number of people within a housing unit is only 2.7. Now what that says is, is we're dramatically undersized in terms of the number of housing units available. There's a significant number of single-family, I should say, one-parent, single additional person in that household throughout the state, but, but more importantly in East Bridgewater. That, that in, 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 in a major way accounts for, how can we have almost 5,200 housing units in town where 20 years ago we had 3,000 and something, yet the population has not increased dramatically? And the school, the school enrollment has dropped from over 2,500 to under 2,000. That's because, I mean, overly simplified, there's only, in most cases, only one, one child in a household. That child doesn't enter school until five, something, five and a half years old or whatever. So I think it's important to understand that for better or for worse, whether we like it or not, the demographics have changed, we don't have enough, enough housing units in town. The state legislature has made it abundantly clear that they will step on communities within the state of Massachusetts if they don't do something to address that change in demographics. One of those changes is this, and the, the reason this one is slightly different than the, than the other one, it's also already been passed, and that is the, the ability to basically build a second housing unit on individual family lots, which we're going to talk about in a minute, is because we need to do something to address the problem that we have. Their opinion, I'm not going to comment on whether I think it's ideal or not, but their opinion is that if we could get more housing units along the lines where the MBTA runs to, to take employees into those areas where employees are highly needed cities, Boston, the immediate suburbs of Boston, where a substantial portion of the employment in the, in the state of Massachusetts is, then, then we need to try and address that need. We need to try and address the need for entry-level housing. Effectively in the town of East Bridgewater, we have no entry-level housing, zero, none. I mean, I can speak to that being a family of size which I won't mention, but I'm an Irish-American family, post-Wildewood II, strong Catholics, you can guess about how many that might be. The changes over those last 30 years is, is so huge that it's really hard to understand if you haven't been on this side of this table for the last four decades. I don't know how we resolve that, I don't know the best way to resolve that, but, but as much as I love open space, I'm an outdoorsman, I'm a fisherman, I love being out in the middle of nowhere where there's no one around. We simply cannot do that and continue to try and do that in the town of East Bridgewater, it just does not work. We're not out in the country, we're not out in the wilderness. I, I don't know how we fix this, but I'm a strong believer that this is, we're taking this in an area that's, as best as we can in our town, provides access to a roadway that, that gets us as close as we can to minimize the traffic within the town itself. Is the town, is the state rather strong-arming? Us, us individually, no. Those 130 or 40 towns, yeah, they probably are. But if I could think of a better solution to get more housing with, without making major changes, at least in some parts of the town, I'd be the first to suggest it, so...
Thank you very much for your explanation.
So the matter will be, a public hearing will be coming up on May 5th, and the bylaw as proposed by this board will be available for public consumption on or before the 21st of this month on the website. Okay. With respect to ADU, just an update there, I believe we mentioned at the last meeting that there was guidance put out by the state with respect to the, their, their take on what was necessary in terms of updating community bylaws and the like. There were some differences, there are some differences in that, largely in terminology. The state does, does speak to the idea of a protected use accessory dwelling unit. They also give a town option if the town wants to do something a little bit broader and so forth. There is, will be circulated a, a draft of the, a proposal because we will be looking for further changes in the ADU bylaw that we did, did amend in the fall to now match up better with the, what the state has put out. Largely the same idea, as Roy was just mentioning, the idea that you can have multiple dwellings on the same lot, smaller dwellings and the like, so there's not much change. So there's not much change in that, but again, the state has fleshed it out a little bit, so I think there's a little bit better understanding with which we can work going forward. So there will be likewise a public hearing scheduled on that with regard to an approval or an action prior to town meeting. Roy, any comment there?
So those public hearings will also be April 21 and April 28? The draft bylaw is a, well, we're going to actually vote on that in a little bit in terms of setting those public hearings, but those are the dates we need to meet, so. The draft bylaw is based on a boilerplate that was issued by the state. We all know how Massachusetts works, so as things would have it, the boilerplate recommended bylaw was actually issued after the law went into effect and after the building inspector was required to issue building permits. But in any case, given that, very oversimplified, the bylaw basically says, based on state law, that anyone who lives in a single-family home on a single lot in a zoning district that allows single-family dwellings is allowed to build a second residential unit of up to 900 square feet or 50% of the existing single-family home that's there. So if the single-family home is already over 1,800 square feet, they could build a second unit that's 900 square feet or less. Now, that unit can either be physically attached to the existing dwelling, or it can actually be a separate standalone small house, compact house, whatever you want to call that. There's no requirement that the owner of the unit, existing single-family home, lives in that single-family home. So that could be a rental property, that they then build a second rental property, effectively turn the house that's existing into a duplex home, or build a second small unit on the property. And again, it's going to depend a lot as to what your lot looks like, what your space is on the lot. The state law seems to say pretty clearly that, because this is defined as an accessory dwelling unit, the setbacks would be for accessory buildings. So instead of the requirement being a 25-foot setback for the principal residential unit, the accessory dwelling unit would have a setback of accessory buildings, which in the Residence One District in our town would be 10 feet. So that's a significant difference in terms of what the dimensional setbacks would be required under zoning. We're still trying to clarify a couple of those things. Number one is, do we need to use the accessory setbacks for the accessory unit? Initial non-legal response immediately was, yes, you have to use the accessory setbacks, not the principal building setbacks. So at least theoretically, almost anybody with a single-family home in a single-family zoning district, or a single-family home in the R2 district on a single-family lot, could build a second unit on that lot. Not getting into further details about where and when, but my wife and I are looking at this in another town. It's pretty clear that that's what towns have to allow. We're looking at building a residential unit in my daughter-in-law's house in another town. It's pretty clear from long discussions with the building inspector that there's almost nothing the town can do now to prevent that, and they have to issue a building permit. You still have to meet all of the other requirements, independent of specific zoning and building code, and that is, you still have to have a Title V requirement. If you're going to add a two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit, then you're going to have to go, if you have a four-bedroom septic system, you're going to have to go to a six-bedroom septic system. You're still going to have to meet conservation requirements. So if you're going to do a major addition, it's going to impact closer to the current setbacks in terms of the Wetlands Protection Act. You're still going to have to get permission and approval from conservation. So those don't go away based on this, but it makes a significant dent in zoning in terms of what you can restrict. And again, overly simplified, it makes all single-family zones in the state of Massachusetts So I think that's all I have to add to that right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I mean, the bottom line, I think, is that in terms of differences between what we've got and what we would be looking to do, it's essentially the same thing with some updates to terminologies and to, I think there's a better standard that's articulated in the new proposal with respect to what the state is suggesting for standards for approval or disapproval of any applications, so. That being said, we'll schedule those public hearings unless there's any other question for the same dates, 21 and 28 of this month, with a, excuse me, those advertisements for the 21st and 28th with a public hearing on May 5.
Okay. Okay, so, and if I could, one other item in regards to the public hearings we're going to have on the April 21st and April 28th for the public hearing on May 5 is that we've received a request from a landowner in the town who's in the process of potentially building a commercial building at the intersection of Route 27 and 14 down near the Hanson Line, that we consider allowing residential uses in the second floor of commercial buildings. I have drafted a zoning proposal to change our zoning bylaw to do that. We've already received a slot on annual town meeting through the Board of Selectmen to handle that. That would also have a hearing on April 21st and April 28th for a public hearing on May 5.
An advertisement on 21 and 28.
Advertisement would run, yeah, the 21 to 28, the hearing would be on the 5th. So at this point, I'll make a motion that we hold three public hearings. Those public hearings would be all on May 5. The legal ads would run April 21st and April 28th. Those public hearings would be for the MBTA 2025 zoning bylaw, for the accessory dwelling unit, the protected accessory dwelling unit zoning bylaw, and for the residential second floor and what we know is the R3 district, which is basically highway business district.
R3 of B3.
Is that on Central Street?
I'm sorry, it's B3.
Is that Central Street?
It's at the intersection of...
27 and 14.
27 and 14, which is, it's basically opposite Trittown, yes, yes.
So Mr. Gardner makes the motion to schedule public hearings for MBTA communities, ADU, and second-floor residential use in B3 zones for 21 and 28 of April with public hearing on May 5. That motion is seconded by Mr. Heager. Is there any further discussion there? Hearing none. All those in favor of such schedule, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
An opposed unanimous vote of all members present and voting. Last item on tonight's agenda is with respect to Daisy Lane. There had been a letter and contact with the office and other departments by one of the homeowners down there indicating that there was a problem with one of the detention Is that something we have on?
Yeah, you want an update?
Oh, yeah, if you have an update, sure. I do know whether you had anything on the screen.
Yeah, so one of the detention bases, which is in the front yard of a home on Daisy Lane, the owner of that home, and I believe it's Seven Daisy Lane, if my memory serves me correctly, the homeowner has indicated it's difficult to try and mow the slope sides of that detention basin, and is asked whether or not we can potentially ask the developer to, when he seeds the rest of the stuff that he's going to seed in the spring, because he's still finishing the last, I believe it's the last four houses, the landscape, final landscape work and seeding hasn't been done in those, because those houses were ongoing construction during the winter and the spring. We are going to contact the developer and see if he can, when his landscape company comes in within the next four or six weeks, give or take, to do the seeding, whether they can reseed that detention basin with something more appropriate than just plain grass, maybe wildflowers or something like that, because the homeowner has indicated it's really not possible to safely mow that. It is the sideline, the side slopes of that detention basin are probably roughly 30%. That's tough to mow with a mower. The detention basin is built as designed, it is working as designed. So from a planning board standpoint, there's really no issues with that basin. But we will contact, I have talked directly to the developer several times. He's indicated a willingness that when his crew comes in to do additional work at that site, that they could reseed the side slopes of that detention basin. So I was just asked if the board authorized sending a letter to the developer with a copy to the homeowner, asking the developer if he'd be willing to, when his crew is on-site, to just reseed that basin that's a relatively small area.
Make that motion, Mr. Gardner. Okay, motion is made by Mr. Heager with respect to a letter to go out to Daisy Lane developer with respect to the reseeding of the basin in front of, the detention basin in front of Seven Daisy Lane. Second to the motion, seconded by Mr. Crosby. Further discussion? Draft a letter, and we'll provide it to the office for mailing. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
An opposed unanimous vote of all members present and voting. Other matters to come before the board this evening.
So one further update, we had a meeting this morning regarding the potential hiring of a town engineer. There seemed to be pretty much unanimous approval over representation from most of the town departments that we should move forward with that. The discussion was that the town engineer's salary range should be upped a little bit in the job description that we would advertise. There seems to be consensus that that will be included in the town financials for annual town meeting coming up. There is a job description which is circulating right now between all the people who are in that meeting. That meeting was 10:30 this morning. The job salary range is $85,000 to $125,000. That's actually on the low end of senior engineers in other towns around us, but the intent would be try and get an engineer in that we could get to work with us. I believe for my past lifetime in the engineering world, that given the way all the engineering firms are being consolidated into basically national, even multinational companies, that there will be some local people that would be, especially senior people, that would be interested in moving on, taking their retirement from whatever company they're working for and potentially work locally, hoping that would work in terms of getting an experienced, qualified engineer to handle our information. I think as we know, our current engineer, which was Environmental Partners, has now been bought out by a much larger company called Apex Engineering. They're a multinational company. We've already been notified that engineering costs will be increased at some point, their cost numbers are going up. The ability to get immediate response when we see a problem in town, i.e. the most obvious one we've had over the past six or seven months is the flooding on Central Street where the new developments have been going in, new houses. It's extremely difficult to get immediate response so that we can get someone to that site while the problem is visible in existence. If we had a local employee, that would clearly be directly addressed. The other piece of this is, there's at least part of the current Board of Health review process that's going on that would have been done by the health agent, which is currently an open slot right now that they've been looking at filling. Some of those tasks could also be done by the town engineer, i.e. those being review of both repair and/or new Title V septic systems. So between all of the monies and for understanding on the board, last year, the town spent just under $400,000 for engineering consulting. Now, a good percentage of that was paid by individual developers. But we certainly, if we were to hire a town engineer, as other towns have done, we would raise our fees to cover the majority of that salary. Now, again, that's a variable, because if there's no development going on, for whatever reason, then the amount of applications coming in, the amount of pay coming in would be lower than it is right now. But the average over the last three or four years since we've been using Environmental Partners is over $300,000 a year.
Yeah, you're not going to be an engineer there.
No. So we would hire an engineer for somewhere in the range of 80 to 125, plus benefits, which typically is somewhere between 30 and 40%, depending on what health insurance packages they would need. So it'd be about half of that. Now, we would, for some of the projects, we would still need an outside engineer. As John Haynes, who would be the hiring supervisor in this case, DPW, noted that if we were to put in a new filtration plant in, at one of the wells, that would have to be done by an outside company that's got multiple different staff people available to put that kind of package together. A single in-house engineer would probably not be able to do that. But independent of that, it appears that we could get a more responsive, more cost-effective engineer for a better price. So I believe there's a consensus right now that we will have that in the budget for annual town meeting. Obviously, the hiring process would be, as it stands right now, the hiring supervisor, as I said, would be DPW Director John Haynes. Office would probably be in the DPW building. But it does appear financially that we could do that with what amounts to effectively almost no additional cost to the town when we roll in about 50% of the Board of Health cost for Title V updates and Title V new systems. So that was the update. I will, I'm working on the job description. We just modified, I just modified it two hours ago for feedback for today's meeting. I will send that around to everyone on the board, probably tomorrow morning.
Further discussions, questions, comments, motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Heager to adjourn, is there a second to the motion?
A second to that.
By Mrs. Tedesco. All those in favor of adjourning, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
An opposed unanimous vote of all members present and voting. Thank you all.